I'd like to call the meeting of the, let me get my agenda here, flip over to the next thing. Like to call together the City Commission Special Interview Meeting. We are here at Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, and I have to ask Mr. Wiley do the roll.
Commissioner Adam Marl.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Scott Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Denise McGriff.
Present. So tonight, we have on our business agenda, we have the DMMO Board of Directors interviews. And for those of you that don't know what the DMMO is, in TV land, we are, it is the destination, is it marketing come first or management come first?
Management comes first.
Destination Management Marketing Organization. It is our version in a very special way of the future, like Mount Hood territory. They are a DMO. All right. So gentlemen, you have in front of you the, the questions again, and then we have our, our sheets from last time. If you want to take a look at those as well. And so, Mr. Graham, do you have anything introducing it? Or shall we go right to the first applicant?
Just to give a little context, as you recall, during your March 4th meeting, the commission interviewed eight candidates for the DMMO Board of Directors. Now, the commission sought to appoint seven candidates to represent various industries, industry sectors. After the interview session, the city commission made four appointments and decided to ask staff to go back into the community to identify more candidates. Specifically, and especially those that are representative of the arts slash culture, retail, agritourism, and retail industries. So tonight, we were scheduled to have three interviewees, but I think we have two. And we have.
Could you explain, please?
One of them could not make it due to unforeseen circumstances.
So do we have an option to possibly interview that person? I mean, we understand that things happen beyond our control that just, well, I understand that quite well.
Well, you, you, it's up to the, the commission, but the options you have is to, to interview these two candidates. You very well may appoint one or two of them. The, the DMMO Board of Directors really needs a minimum of five individuals to actually start operating as a Board of Directors. But you can, you can appoint one or two and leave it to the DMMO Board of Directors to appoint its last member.
Oh, I don't like that.
Or you could decide to schedule another day to schedule another individual or individuals. So that's, that's, it's up to your pleasure.
Well, gentlemen, I guess I would like to say, I would really like to be able to intro, to interview as soon as possible, the person that submitted an application from agritourism, because I think that's an important component. And I think if we could carve out 10 minutes maybe before a meeting or middle of a meeting, coming up to do that, I think it's important for us to hear from that particular sector.
So that's the one that is not here tonight?
The circumstance is beyond their control. Yes.
Jessica?
Yeah, Jessica.
Yeah.
Well, we're all going to be here Thursday night for the, but for the urban renewal budget, or is it, yeah, urban renewal budget. 15 minutes before that?
Okay.
Could you check on that?
Sure, I'm glad to.
All right. Do we have a consensus, Rocky? Yes. Yeah, okay. All right. So we want to try to do that.
In terms of tonight, are we going to stick with the same questions?
Uh, yes.
So I had one and six, I think?
Yes.
Just to be consistent with the other.
I think I wrote on my other thing who did. So you had the first one.
I used to have them there.
Yeah, Scott had number two, I had number three, Adam had number four, Mike had five, Rocky had number six.
Okay.
And then I ended up with anything you'd like to ask us.
I would just say, in terms of doing.
Yes.
Going on Thursday, I would request that the 15 minute be starting at the time that we were planning on starting the other meeting and pushed back by 15 so that I'm able to make it.
Absolutely. Yeah. So then Scott had seven, Adam had eight, Mike had nine.
And, and the interview, if it, if we're able to make it happen on Thursday, the time of the interview would be?
What works for you.
Well, can you, if it's, if the other meetings have been posted, can you even change the?
I mean, we can't, we can't start before the posting time. We can start after. So right now, we have the Urban, Oregon City Urban Renewal Commission Budget Committee meeting starting here at 6:00 PM. So it sounds like if we can confirm the availability of the applicant, we would post a special meeting for 6:00 PM to do the DMMO interview. And then we would just leave the Urban Renewal Budget meeting as is, and it would just start when we're done.
Okay. I want to make sure it works for you.
As long as we don't start before.
Right. Okay. If we can do that?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. We got everybody. Yes.
Okay. So tonight, we have Triest Andrews and Daria, Doria, Lori, and I will go and bring Triest.
Does that mean you're going to get the budget meeting done 15 minutes earlier too?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
At least the first one.
Yeah, at least.
That doesn't mean anything for the second or third one.
We have a, we have a tentative plan.
Hello.
We have a copy of the questions for, there was a copy, but it looks like it's disappeared.
Here, I can.
You have a blank one?
I have a blank one. Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Thank you. Oh, sure.
Okay, just for the record, would you introduce yourself?
My name is Triest Andrews.
Okay. So let's start off with the first person asking the question.
All right. First question is, why do you want to be involved with Destination Oregon City? And how do you see your role in its development and success?
Um, I, I've been really involved in the arts in Oregon City for probably close to 10 years now. Very involved with the Three Rivers Artists Guild. Got a lot of funding for different art projects and art events in Oregon City, especially through the COVID years. And I'm very passionate about just the role that arts can play in a community. Because yes, we all agree that arts is aesthetically value of us all. But what's really important in this kind of meeting or this kind of situation is what it can bring to the economy. Because there are facts and figures what an economic engine arts and culture can be to community. I have facts and figures here if you want to see them. I was involved in a steering committee for a year and a half, 18 months, that was funded with $500,000 just to create an art and culture plan for three different counties, Multnomah, Washington, and Clackamas. Spent 18 years forming a plan, a foundation that any city can use to kind of have some framework of how does art and culture work in a community. And a lot of the part of that was, was from a study, the Arts and Economic AEP 6 study that has the millions and millions of dollars, the study was done from coast to coast. And millions and millions of dollars that it brought just to Clackamas County, never mind the US. So anyway, I'm very passionate about how arts and culture can change a community. It, it just does. I've seen it happen.
Thank you. Could you please describe your experience in tourism, hospitality, and other aspects of the travel industry?
I think what I come closest with that, with that question, is I spent five years as the chair and managing the Oregon City Art Festival for five years. So that was bringing tourism to the, to Oregon City. It involved every year between 55 and 60 artists. We had probably, I bet, eight different musical guests that came in and performed. We had five food trucks and it was really kind of a, we worked on this for six months, but learned how to create budgets, how to follow budgets, how to make money on that. And what was really important, because we never had that much money, always watching every single penny. And so it was really important for three straight years, we tracked every place that everybody came to. We had people came in, come in, and we give them something free. And we would say, if, give you this free bag, would you fill out this card? All it had was, how did you hear about us? What's your zip code? And we were able to track all of our marketing, where everybody came from and what worked and what didn't. And we kind of followed that year by year to where, you know, we were able to really bring people in. So that was some, some great data. Yeah, I think that's the closest to tourism and hospitality, you know, although we've done a lot of other events.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes.
Okay. Well, you sort of got into this next question. So experience in marketing and aspects of destination management. So let's focus really on the destination management. So you understand that this group is not going to be hands-on. I mean, they're not going to be putting on festivals or events or doing, this is talking about management oversight and looking at it from the standpoint of, of, you know, a bigger picture now. I, I would say personally, eventually they may get there and be more like our Mount Hood territory. They do have some grants, but I think just in the initial formation. Talk a little bit about destination management.
I think most of the experience and knowledge of that was from the steering committee that I was a part of for 18 months. And that was from '22 and '23. So that was really recent. And that was creating a mission, creating goals, creating a strategy, not funding on that particular steering.
You might want to just move the mic a little bit away so it's not giving you the, there you go.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Yeah. So not so much with any financial budgeting, which I have experience with that, just with, I never, ever, ever, ever start an event without setting my budget and getting actual quotes. I don't want to have somebody say, oh, it's going to be about $200. No. I'm going to call somebody, I'm going to get a quote, that's going to be included in my budget. And that's where I have that experience. But even in the Oregon City Art Commission, when we started, because I was chair and on the, as it first started up was same thing. We had to come, set a mission, we had to set goals, we had to set strategies, we had to set a plan of these are the things we want to do. And it is, it's overwhelming to, to try to put an umbrella over everything you want to do, but to have to start there first. So I think, I think those are my two closest experiences.
Thank you.
So building off of that, what skills or experience do you have in financial oversight or budget development, particularly for marketing or nonprofit organizations?
Yeah. So those are the, Three Rivers Artists Guild is a 501(c)(3). I, in the years of COVID, I got probably 30,000 to 40,000 in grant money plus event money. There was a lot of money available for the arts. Tried to keep our gallery open through that. We did the first spring fling that we actually had to adhere to all of the COVID regulations, which was a nightmare, but it all worked. People were so ready to get out. And, you know, this is where you come in, this is where you exit, this is where you don't touch, this is all your hand lotion. This is, so, yeah, and it was totally worth every moment of that and every penny of that. We had music, we had art. It was a great event. And so that would, I had to do the financial budget for that plus grants. And I'm, I'm still writing grants now for a smart, a small art organization called Russian Palette. So, you know, you want to write, it can seem overwhelming when you start, but you start to write grants and it's the same thing. And I do like to write, so that makes it a little bit easier. But once you do write a grant, you kind of get the swing of it. This is what they want to hear, this is what they want to know. Budget, again, like I said before, I don't start anything without a budget, ever. And I follow it every single week. I'm filling things in, watching to see if we're still under budget, seeing what we need. And really even at the beginning, setting a budget with where can I get my grants, what time are those grants closing? Is it going to be in time for the event? So, so, yeah.
So you've already touched on this, but we ask all the interviewees the same list of questions, so it's repetitive. I apologize. What experience do you have as a board member for nonprofit organizations?
So I was then on the board of the Three Rivers Artists Guild for, I want to say, seven or eight years. I was president for three of those years and a member with them for about 10. I've also been on the, on the Oregon City Art Commission for three years, which is a very eye-opening, working with the city. And so, yeah, that was a challenge and that was great. And it's really wonderful to see them. I just finished my term this past December and they are rolling along. So, yeah, I think that's my experience for board.
Rocky?
All right. I scratched out long-term because that confused people when we were talking about the number of years. So what goals do you think the DMO should set for itself in the next three to five years?
Um, there, I mean, the first seven, I think it was the seven that they published that were looking for a Board of Directors. As soon as I saw that came out, I'm like, wow, this is great. And I looked at the list and art and culture was not a part of it. And I was shocked because I had just finished with the steering committee and I had just finished finding all the facts and figures of the AEP study, which is an art and cultural study they do from coast to coast. And the amount of money that art and culture can bring to an economy is staggering. Do you have time to read you some of the facts and figures just for Clackamas? Would that be helpful?
Briefly.
The A and P study is the Arts and Economic Prosperity Study. It was number six. They finished it in 2022, which means they went through the years of COVID studying it. This is for Clackamas County alone. You can go into this, you'll see the facts and figures across the US and all of Oregon. But for Clackamas County, arts and culture generated 26.1 million in economic activity during 2022. It supported 573 jobs, it contributed 17.5 million in household income for local residents, and it delivered 4.5 And it delivered 4.5 million in tax revenue to local, state, and federal governments. Art and culture is a goldmine. And you can use art and culture for any goal you set. It's kind of the tool for everything. You want to pursue DEI initiatives? Arts and culture, a multicultural event. Do you want to pursue mental health for youth? There are facts and figures that I have in the same study that I did, how art affects mental health for our youth. Anything, I went through all of the seven goals of Oregon City. Art and culture can be a tool for every one of those. We all tend to think of art and culture as an aesthetic value. It's an economic engine. So, and I've seen that. I've seen that happen. Art centers being developed and change a whole city's income and tourism.
Okay. Scott?
What approaches would you recommend to ensure there's collaboration between the Destination Oregon City and the City of Oregon City's Economic Development Department, the Downtown Oregon City Association, the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce, and other business-focused organizations?
So how to bring those together?
Yeah, how would you encourage collaboration between all of them?
I was also an employee of the Chamber of Commerce for a couple of years, for one year, probably, I don't know, five, six years ago. And then, yeah, the director had to leave unexpectedly and kind of filled in for a few months and then worked for another year. And then I was asked to come back on a short-term assignment just about two years ago. Also, what I have found with getting involved in the arts is I've ended up working with almost every organization in Oregon City. I don't know how that happened. Like, I don't know. People come to me because they're like, hey, I need such and such. And I'll say, oh, call this person. Let me give you their number. And I don't know how that happened. I really don't. But everybody loves the arts. I worked with Downtown Oregon City. Doing what we did is we, I got a grant for this. And we took all of the windows and vacant spaces. And I had artists. We put together a gallery online. I had all these artists put all their works up. We had those owners of those vacant spaces, rather than putting brown paper up, we had them choose one of those pictures. Then I took it to Beul's and we had it magnified onto a board that would fit those windows and then pasted them in. So as you go up and down Main Street, instead of seeing these brown paper, all these vacant, you'd see these gorgeous pieces of art.
What happened to those? What happened to those?
They took them down eventually. The one place that kept them up was... Weinhearts.
Yeah.
Yeah, right next to it. That was the last one to go down. So I'm not sure what happened to them. But we probably had like, I've had about 15 different places until the money ran out. But I was able to pay artists. It was, you know, nobody had to pay for anything. It was all through a grant. So anyway, doing that, you get to know everybody in town. I worked on another project with the Clackamas Historical Society. They wanted to create nine life-size women of history to kind of celebrate the 100th anniversary of a women's suffragette movement. And we created all these Clackamas. I threw RPG in because, you know what? She had just passed. I'm like, no, we're not doing this with RPG. And so we did nine. And those ended up traveling all over Clackamas to different places. You can still see one down at the old Carver Church down there. She sits out, or she stands up. And that was great. That was another grant that I was able to get. And we were able to pay the artist to create these magnificent pieces of art that are still around.
You said Baker Cabin. Baker Cabin.
Baker. That's it.
The other ones are at Philip Foster Farm, and they are still...
Oh, okay.
Yes, but you're talking about the Clackamas County Heritage Council. That's who did the project, not the Historical Society.
Okay. I think, yeah, I think I've worked with somebody from this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got you. But heritage, yes, you're correct. Thank you. So anyway, I don't know how it happened, but, you know, I just made a lot of connections through the years because people love art. They love it. You can do anything with it.
So how would you handle conflicts of interest or differing opinions among board members and executive directors, stakeholders, or the community?
Yeah, I think that's something I have questions on myself. I learned a lot being on the Oregon City Art Commission about conflicts of interest and what is allowed and what's not allowed. And that was a really large learning experience. And I realized that, and I honored that. But, yeah, you're trying to move ahead with your goals and also make sure that everything is legal and above board. I appreciate that. I never am not busy. I'm involved with three large projects right now. They're ending by mid-June. They'll be all done and finished. And that's kind of my question too, is the time commitment on this. I don't do anything halfway. It's just, I'm just not made that way. And so if I go, I go all out. And I want to make sure that I have the time to give you. And I want to watch that time if this is a possibility. I just feel so strongly and passionate that art and culture has to be visible in Oregon City. When I started with the Art Commission, it was brand new. It was something that was developed so that we can continue the mural kind of goals because it had to be approved by an art commission. We didn't have one. And I never do anything without mentors. Maybe that's why I know a lot of people also outside of Oregon City, but all over Clackamas County, because I don't do anything without a mentor. If I haven't done it before, I'm going to find somebody who did. I'm going to find somebody that was a success at it. And every commission I talked to, everyone, at the end, they'd say, you know, you're not going to be able to do a lot until you get your city's support. And that's going to take three to five years. Art Commission is now three years, and I really see it taken off, which is just so exciting. But I think it is so important, even said to the Art Commission committee members now, make some partnerships, make some relationships, make some connections because nothing's going to happen unless we work together. It can't, we can't be these silos. Like, City of Oregon City is kind of known for that. Working with people one-on-one, they're wonderful and they're gracious and they're kind. But the red tape of getting through stuff, Oregon City is also known for that. So a lot of people see it from other experience is that we're silos. We all work really well on our own, but we don't communicate enough to work as a whole. They think that is critical. I think that's critical.
Okay, Michael?
Outside of board meetings, what do you think would be your responsibility as a Destination Oregon City board member?
Well, I went through all of the DMOMO, you know, all of kind of a description of what the DMOMO do. These are the things that I'm comfortable with. I know some of them are, is making connections. I'm comfortable with that. Some of it is financial management. I know how to do budgets. I don't know how comfortable I am or if I have enough knowledge for financial budgeting. Trying to think of all the things I read, like all that. So you do budgeting, it's financial management, it's overseeing, it's tracking what the DMOMO is doing with the goals and the strategies and the missions that you set. So making sure that we're staying on line and we're going down the road and nothing's happening. Stay in touch to see what the problems might be, how you can solve it. So I think with anything, and especially with that, is communication, communication, communication.
I think since you've read the material, you know that one of the first tasks will be to hire an executive director. So how do you think that the board members should work with the executive director of the DMOMO?
So can you also explain to me a little bit that process? Is the executive director a part of the board of directors? And the DMOMO reports to them?
They will be the staff.
Okay.
To the DMOMO.
Yeah.
They will be in charge. The board will be directing that person. But the person that is hired will be doing the execution of whatever the goals and strategies are.
Yeah. And again, the question, I'm sorry, there.
How do you think you would, as a board member, work with an executive director?
All I can say is communication. And I think I've worked with so many organizations, so many people, usually on a volunteer basis. I'm sorry, I'm laughing. But you have to learn to always appreciate any volunteer. I don't care what they do. I don't care how they are. If they're volunteering, you tell them, you appreciate them. You're very careful. If you have to give a critique, you have to first make that connection. You have to make sure they feel safe. And then you explain what you might want to tell them. And then after that, you make that connection again. Thank you. Done that many times with people that are, you know, on a board with me. I'm president right now, my little Russian Palette group. And you just learn how to work with people, you know, people that are extremely difficult. You approach over and nothing changes. One time I had to write a whole code of conduct. I had to write the code of conduct and then say, we've had discussion three times. This is the code of conduct we have. If you can't abide by this, then write in the code of conduct, we're going to have to let you go. So it's just...
So is that a board member?
No, this was a member of an organization that I had that was really causing some problems. You know, you also realize that people have all kinds of mental abilities and mental issues. And you just have to learn to appreciate that and how to work with that. And if you can't work that, how to kind of nicely get around that.
So do you have any questions for us?
I do. When would the DMOMO's board of directors for the DMOMO start?
The first organizational meeting of the board of directors would be April 10.
April 10, the first meeting?
It's an organizational meeting.
Okay. When would it actually... Like I said before, I'm involved in some large projects which are going to end, the last one will end mid-June. One is May 3, one is mid-June, and one is May and April.
So what's the question?
Oh, the question just is, I want to make sure that...
When is the board going to start?
Yeah.
Oh, well, the first organizational meeting is April 10. And then after that, the board of directors will decide when they will start.
Oh, okay. So there's no time.
So are you sure it's going to be April the 10?
Yeah.
Because our representative from the commission is going to be otherwise occupied that day, as you are aware.
Oh, I was not aware of that one. But we've scheduled it for April the 10. And I've sent out notices to everybody.
I know. Commissioner Smith is our designated representative.
Right. But we all, as I said, we don't all have to be there. It's just that the board, it's important for the...
No, I have nothing to do with it. We have budget.
Because we may very well lose our attorney, who's going to be leaving the country. That's why April 10 is important.
Well, yeah, because we have budget that night. That's what I'm saying. Okay. Next question.
Yeah, what kind of time commitment overall as it starts and as it's rolling along with the DMOMO?
As with any organization, you probably can imagine that when the board, when it's going to take about... The board probably will meet almost every other month. And then as things settle, they meet less, maybe quarterly, and then every six months. It all depends how it works out. But the initial process, you're much more engaged with each other more often in order to get the organization up and running.
Okay. What's the relationship between the city and the board of directors and the DMOMO? How does that all work and report to?
We're going to be the Daddy Warbucks for a while.
Who's the Daddy Warbucks?
The city will be the Daddy Warbucks. For a while.
Did you appoint a daddy yet? Yeah, so what's that?
I will serve as the city liaison with the board and the organization to help with the communication between the city and it. And there's an MOU that will be established with the board of directors or the organization, I should say, the organization. And it will be funded through TLT funds, transit lodging tax funding. So that's the connection through a MOU. And so in essence, the organization will be something of a subcontractor for tourism on behalf of the city.
Okay. So the DMOMO is funded through the city tourism?
Yes.
Okay.
Transit lodging tax?
Yeah.
Conflict of interest for events? If I'm involved in other art events, would that constitute a conflict of interest? Right now, I'm involved in the Six by Six show. If that was still running, would that be a conflict of interest?
It's hard to say. It doesn't seem to be a conflict of interest. You have to approach these things in one situation at a time. But if you feel that there's a conflict of interest and you were at a board meeting, it's incumbent upon you to say, well, I have a conflict of interest because I'm working with this and the DMOMO is also working with this. So I'm going to have to recuse myself.
Okay. And I have done that before with the Art Commission.
But it's a wonderful, it's as things come up.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I think that's it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We plan on making a decision, at least maybe a partial decision. We still have one other person we're going to interview that's not available tonight, so.
Oh, okay. Okay, great. I'll wait here. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I think that's Daria's jacket. But don't forget your jacket. Yes. We never know what's going on out there. It could be monsooning or... I know the sun's not out, that's for sure, but... A tornado? You never know. I pulled up to City Hall this morning and just as I got out of the car, it just... And I think I have an extra question because I think Trias took it with her.
I was, yeah, I was just going to say, it looks like she took the sheets, sir.
There you go. Oh!
Just want to give you an idea of what we're going to ask.
Thank you.
Name, rank, and serial number, as they say. So good evening. So just introduce yourself or...
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daria Loy. I am a resident of Oregon City and a business owner in downtown Oregon City.
All right. First question is, why do you want to be involved with Destination Oregon City? And how do you see your role in its development and success?
Okay. Well, let me sit closer here. Well, I want to...
If you're too close, it's too loud.
It's going to be...
Yeah, you're probably good there.
Is this okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm a business owner, as I was saying, in Oregon City. And I see on an everyday basis, I've got a good glimpse into what we have, the wealth of beauty that is available in our city. I mean, downtown, there are gazillions of beautiful buildings. I see the cliff. You know, I can walk one block and go and see the waterfall. I'm surrounded by all this beautiful gem. And I feel that while there is, certainly, I do see a lot of tourists coming in, especially over the weekend.[1785.33] I mean, such a beautiful gem deserves way more than what I see as a business owner. And so I feel there is an untapped treasure waiting to be fully discovered by way more people than the one that we already see. And I see on every weekend, there are a lot of tourists that come because through my social media platform, I promote, I have an art gallery in downtown. And so I use the social media dominantly, really, to attract people to my business. And so I have people coming from all over, for as far as Salem, actually, I have people coming as far as Salem to see my gallery. And when they come, then what I do, I spend time to tell them what to do after they left my gallery. And I spend time to interview them or understanding, why are you here besides the gallery? What would you like to do? What would you like to say? And so as soon as I started explaining what the city has to offer, I see like literally glitter in their eyes, right? They discover things that they never heard of. And from quirky, weird shops to amazing architecture and historical facts and natural reserves. I mean, there is countless numbers of beautiful things that we can offer. But they didn't even know about it, right? And so I feel that we have this beautiful gem waiting to be completely polished and discovered. And I have decades, you know, prior to opening a gallery, I was in ITech for decades and I was in many marketing organizations. So that's one of my strengths. And there are many things that we can do to increase that number of tourists. But tourists that are not just passing through to get a glimpse at, you know, a cute little town. I think we have an opportunity, given the beautiful gem that we have in our hands, to really create something more sustainable, something that is more, has got a life beyond the immediate glimpse that you can get over the weekend, right? Something that is really, I want to come back. There is more for me here, right? Because otherwise, you have tourists that come and just, you know, never to be seen again. But we don't want those. We want people to really fall in love with the city because there's so much. And so I really, I want to be involved because I see this beauty, I see the potential, I have skill sets that I know I can use to service that. And I want to contribute, right? And so I am not the kind of person that likes to sit back and just like wait for things to happen. So as a business owner, I want to be hands-on, I want to contribute. So if I see something that could be improved, I wanna be part of that opportunity.
Thank you.
Of course.
Can you please describe your experience in tourism, hospitality, and other aspects of the travel industry?
Well, besides the fact that I've been traveling all my life and I love to pay attention to that. I could be a travel agent, I'm told by many of my friends. Because I love to do, you know, I've got a research background and so I love to do substantial research when I travel. And so I kind of educate myself substantially about that factor. But putting that aside, more specifically to Oregon City, you know, when I moved there, I didn't know anything about the city. I really didn't. And when I had to make a decision on where to put my business, I could have put it in many other places because there are many places that I can drive to as a quick commute that is not Oregon City. But I did my research. I like doing my research and my study. And I find that this was a perfect place for the type of business that I wanted to have, right? And through that research is really where I kind of refined my understanding from a tourism perspective of what this area, this region has got to offer. But putting that aside, really through my businesses where I actually have a very hands-on, everyday insights, because what I do, I can't help it, I interview people when they come in my business. You know, when they come in, I ask immediately, where are you from? Are you a local? Where from? Are you from Oregon City? Oh, no, I am from Wistville or I'm from Salem. Okay, what brought you here today? And then I like, what would you like to see? And I try to really gather that information. And so to me, like, there is much that I could say about tourism in a more generic way, but I think it's more important to go into the depth of where we are, right? And the hands-on, everyday level of tourism attractiveness that we can kind of offer in this place. Because otherwise, we end up generalizing on tourism in a generic way. But I mean, the reality about tourism, that is all about the local community, about the local beauties. And you can have high levels understandings and strategies that are typical marketing strategy for a tourism association. But then you really need to take it to the level of what are the specificity of where you are, right? And so this interviewing process that I'm engaging in on a everyday basis is a very good way to get that kind of more everyday level insights. And I do the same also with Oregon City people, by the way. Because it's very interesting to observe people that are in the neighborhood association up the hill versus liking unincorporated. Why do you live here? What do you love about this place, right? That's a good way to really gather insights from, there's so much information in the people that live here, right? That can be gathered. And so, you know, it's experiencing tourism, certainly hospitality and tourism, like, as a retailer, you know, you have that kind of direct insight. And, but I think it's more about spending, my spending time, quality time with my clients and customers, really, that where I find that is the most valuable tourism knowledge that I gathered versus the more high-level one that I accumulated just because I like doing research around destinations all the time. And when I was doing marketing in ITech, I had to do it as a job. But I'm more interested, more fond of the specificity of Oregon City, everyday tourism knowledge, I guess, if it makes sense.
Well, I think you've kind of already answered question number three. It says, please describe your experience with marketing and other aspects of destination management. So I think you pretty much answered that by doing your own in-house sort of inquiry, survey.
Yeah.
You know, it's kind of a stay survey in a way, you know? Again, why are you here?
And in my background, like, so what I was saying, when I was in ITech, one of my main jobs was actually interviewing and doing surveys. Like, that was my, I was an experienced researcher and designer. And so I traveled around the world interviewing people in their homes, in their businesses to really understand how they, in that case, dealt with technology. And so I'm pretty well-versed with all the different techniques and tools that you can do to gather information from your audience. You know, being in marketing surveys, quantitative, large-scale surveys versus more ethnographic interviews and kind of semi-structured interviews. That was my job for a very long time.
What I hear you saying is that you find it much easier to have a conversation, but ask those strategic questions. Because I know I get really annoyed after I've been to a place and then they say, oh, here, fill out this survey. I don't really want to do that.
I hate that. And you know, like, you know, and to your point, you know, like, when I was doing it as a job, there are two different types of doing research. You know, there is the quantitative and qualitative, right? I've always been a, my heart has always been in qualitative. But you know, as a job, I had to do the quantitative also. And I find that honestly, I always feel that doing both is the best answer to the question because you really, the quantitative gives you large-scale kind of demographics and analytics. But then you really need the qualitative to really, to fill the gaps of what those numbers are telling you. Because sometimes you see numbers that don't seem to make any sense. But then when you start asking questions to human beings, then you get the real, the flavor of what the data is trying to tell you. So doing both is important, but personally, my heart is with qualitative.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. What skills or experience do you have in financial oversight or budget development, particularly for marketing or nonprofit organizations?
Well, I have a business and I am a one-person show in my business. I do everything, including all the financial and the budgeting, which is a lot. Also, you know, I am in fact on the board, on the Board of Director of a nonprofit called Democracy Lab. And is a nonprofit that created a platform that connects volunteers, skilled volunteers, with nonprofit companies that wish to have skilled volunteers but don't have enough resources to hire them. And so I've been on that board for a long time. And so as part of my job in that Board of Director is also oversight of the budgeting for that organization.
Well, you already touched on this a little bit, but maybe you can expand. What experience do you have as a board member for a nonprofit organization?
Well, so I've been like, so as I said, right now, I'm on the Board of Democracy Lab. I'm the secretary on the board. I just recently concluded my four-year term on another board for a large quantitative and qualitative marketing research firm that is based both in India and the United States. I just finished this month my four-year term. So I was also on that board for quite a while. I spend as much time as I'm allowed by my body and my job, as much as I can, to give back to the community. So my entire career, I've been in different boards, helping different organizations. I mentor tens and tens of professionals every month. I try to give back as much as I can. And so I think that is part of how I like to conduct my life, I guess. Of course.
All right. What goals do you think the DMMO should set for itself for the next three to five years?
That's a big one. Well, I think, you know, I mean, certainly there's millions of things that can be done, but I do like to do step-by-step, you know? I think, you know, otherwise it's easy to go out of control. To me, the very first, and it's not one that is a simple one to do, but one gap that I have observed, that I think is an impediment to the progress of where we are at in terms of being a more successful tourism hub, right? It's really that sometimes I find, and this is my experience at least as a business owner, but also has been my experience among the Arts Commission, there are a lot of organizations and a lot of people all meaning well, right? All intending to do the best for this city. But they really don't talk to each other very much, if I may say. And, or if they do, sometimes there is a lot of, we are so busy, everybody is so busy, right? And spread so thin. We are all volunteers mostly. And so because of that, what happens is that the right hander doesn't talk to the left or maybe is partially talking to it. And to me, that is what I've observed as being one of the major impediments to our progress is a coordinated effort. And I think the DMMO, that would be to me, one of the most important, crucial part of his job would be to really becoming the enabler, the glue, right? The connecting glue, the connecting tissue to really create efficiency coordination, transparency, collaboration across all these different and disparate, all well-intended organizations, being neighbor associations, being organizations like the Chamber, DACA, different kind of business owners. There are, everyone is well-intended. Everyone wants the best for this place. It's just that nobody's coordinating their efforts. And sometimes we're wasting our energies and I find also creating reciprocal frustration. And so to me, like, the biggest and most important focus area for the beginning of this organization, really try to understand who's here, what is there, and you really do the research of understanding, who is their intention, what are they trying to achieve? And how can we actually coordinate and kind of really become the connecting tissue and drive a unified vision for where this tourism should go versus everyone trying to do something, but nothing really works, right? And they're all well-intended, so I don't want to sound critical, but I think it's well-intended, but we are losing energy and putting energy in million places where it could be more coordinated, more kind of directed. And then, once that is done, which I don't think is an easy one to pull off, it might take some time, honestly. Because, you know, making people talk to each other is the hardest part of any job that I can think of. But then, you know, after that, I think would be important to really settle down on what are the priorities. And I think that, of course, we can do millions of things.
Sure.
And it's great to have a 10-year plan. But I think for three, five years, you want to have, you know, a small number of things with a good analysis of pros, cons. You know, in Intel, when I was working there, we had, you know, the good, the better, and the best scenario, right? So you can have that kind of analysis where you say, okay, this is the minimum that we wish to achieve within this priority. Maybe a stretch goal would be to do this other thing and ideally would be to be over there. But, you know, let's start with what is good, right? And then, you know, we can take it to the best if we can. But having that kind of structure and prioritization of two, three key major areas. And part of that, I think, is important to engage the community in that conversation. Because I think there is nothing that we can do that can be successful in isolation from the context, right? So I think, I always think that when you do, as I put in my application, like, when you do this type of activities, you know, you want to have something that can attract people, which we have, great, tick the box. We've got plenty of things that can attract people to this region, great. Then you need to find, make it easier for them to come to us, to reach the place, right? Then once they're here, we need to provide experiences that have been designed carefully and in a sustainable way. So they have to be designed in a way that are engaging, but also sustainable over time. And by sustainability, I mean many different things, socio-cultural, environmental, right? You know, there are various aspects to that. But then, you know, that aside, you need to engage, right? And the engagement should not be only from the perspective of the people that we attracted. It has to be also of the people that are here. And as I said at the beginning, there is a lot of knowledge and there is a lot of excitement for this city and the people that live here and would be foolish not to learn about the wealth of knowledge, right? And so part of those three, five years is also to gather that information, those insights for the people that live here and they have an incredible wealth of ideas and historical knowledge. I've been here only for four and a half years. The people, they have been here for decades. Of course, I want to learn from them, right? And so that would be part of that process, educating ourselves and then create priorities. And then within those priorities, be clear about what is the minimum that we want to achieve, one step up and the ideal scenario, and then try to push it forward. But first, coordinating all the voices would be nice.
Thank you. So what would you do to make sure there's collaboration between the DMMO, our city's economic development department, and business organizations like DACA and the Chamber of Commerce?
Okay. So I'm gonna answer like what I had tried to do all my career as someone that comes from another country, if you didn't realize so far. That's where my accent is from. Someone that comes from another country and someone that is a woman worked in known, women-dominated environment for a long time. I find that when you want to create coordination between different organizations, you have to forget the fact that there are different organizations and remember that those are people, right? It seems simple, but it is not. Because sometimes you sit around a table and is representative of this with their agenda, representative of this with their agenda, you know? And if you put it from that perspective, the conflict is very easy, right? Because you're not dealing with people. You're dealing with agendas and with hats or brooches, whatever, right? But if you start talking to people as human beings, right? You have to really have a very genuine and authentic, you know, heart-on-your-sleeve kind of conversation. The paradigm shifts very quickly. And I've done it millions of times when I was in ITech. I was in very tense moments where I felt like, wow, okay. People shouting and being mad, but you know, as soon as you say, hey, hold on a second here. We're here, we're all here for the same reason, right? So I think taking it to the perspective of being human beings versus of affiliations, right? Is really the best strategy that I've ever used in my career to really try to have genuine conversation with human beings, right? You treat them like people, they'll treat you like a person. And then you can find the solutions together because you're people, you're human beings, right? You're not numbers, you're not affiliations, you're not badges of honor, right? And I think that makes a massive difference. I know it sounds maybe kind of light and lucid goofy, but hey, I've done it like all my career and I've seen it happen over and over and over again, even with the most hardcore executive, you know, digging their heels. As soon as you start taking down those barricades and facades, it becomes actually much easier conversation, right? So you really need to create a context and environment that is conducive to humanity, if you like. And there are many techniques, you know, psychological techniques that you can use for that, to create that, right? How you put the energy that you want to receive, I guess. I hope it answered the question.
All right. How... Oh, sounds good to me. So outside of board meetings, what would you think of as your responsibility as a Destination Oregon City board member?
Okay. If the responsibility of the organization was only to go to the meetings, I think we... I think we'd be toast. I don't, I don't think, I mean, I've never been in a, in a board where all the job was done and finished in the meeting. I mean, come on. And if you try to do that, you're not serious in the board. That's what I think, right? And you know what I mean, right? I mean, i- if you go just to go to the board meeting, and I've seen people do that, right? Because people do that, they want to tick the box of being on a board, right? And they go the rock up, they do the two hours. And then when there is time to, to volunteer for work, crickets, right? And those are the folks that want to take on the box, right? But the reality is that if you're serious about being a board, you know, there is gonna be way more work out of the board meetings than there is inside the board meetings. Because you're volunteering for time, you're gonna take, you know, you're gonna think about it before the meeting. You have to read your documentation, you have to be serious about it. And then you're gonna have to be fully committed to the outcome, right? And so I tend not to commit to things unless I know that I can deliver them and I can deliver them with integrity and honesty. Otherwise, I don't even bother. Uh, and I think if, if the, the idea is just to be in a board, to be there for a couple of hours a month, I'm not interested. Because I know that two hours a month is not gonna get anything done.
So one of the first things that the board will be doing is hiring an executive director. So how do you think board members should work with the executive director?
Well, as a collaboration, I mean, obviously there is, is a same, to me seems very similar relationship between the executive director of a nonprofit and the board of director of the nonprofit. Like, you know, the board that I'm on right now, for instance. We have our meetings, the board provides recommendations. And when there are moments of voting, there is more voting. When we have to analyze the financials, if there's something that doesn't seem to be quite right or we feel that the executive director perhaps should be pushed in one direction or another, we make it very clear as a board of what the expectations are, right? But at the same time, so you put, you know, the expectation with transparency on the, on the executive director, you trust the executive director that are capable of executing what the board, um, provides as input. And then, you know, there are times, you know, I've, I've been in situation where you had to reiterate in more than one meeting because not all the time things get executed or get, uh, pushed forward as much as you, as you were expecting or the expectation that you were putting on the, on the director. But, I mean, to me, it's a partnership based in trust, in respect, uh, but also understanding that, you know, there are expectations that a board has on, you know, over an executive director and that the board has got a role and responsibility to provide, um, an input that can make the executive director successful in executing and, and, and driving forward, uh, the decisions of the board in ways that the organization can be successful.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any questions for us?
What is your, uh, most urgent and important priority for when it comes to this organization?
Well, I'm gonna turn that over to my friend and colleague, Mr. Smith.
That it exists and it's working, um, and working towards the goals that, that it, it comes up with. I, I mean, I think this is a huge step. We all have a lot of expectations, I think, for what we hope it becomes. Um, it's a little scary because we don't also know what it's gonna become. But the fact that it exists and that we have an organization working towards tourism and working towards, um, bringing people into Oregon City, I think is, is it. I think, um, what you talked about in, um, kind of the first steps of this and even the first couple of years is, is at least what I would like to see is how to, um, those of us sitting here, I think can relate to a lot of the things that you said about Oregon City, and we know that, and about the reasons things have started or stopped or not gotten as far. And I think this organization is essentially what you said, the glue or the, or the way to, to, to actually have a, uh, a, an organization that can do that, um, building of collaboration and, and, and that. Because the individual, and, and it's one of the reasons we, I think, I wanted to see a separate organization was because I knew that most of the organizations are working so hard on their own and want to have the collaborative piece and want to have the dialogue. But they come to, you know, a few meetings and it doesn't get anywhere and it stalls. So, um, I think this is gonna, you know, I hope that this organization kind of stirs that energy back again.
Yeah.
And that people realize that there is a momentum and that there is an organization that's gonna try to pull all these things together. And then if that happens, we're farther than we've ever been. And, um, the future of what it becomes is, is, is just uphill from there. So, um, I, I'm, I'm excited about it.
Yep, thank you. I'm excited too.
Anything else?
Um, oh, I've got millions of questions, but you're probably tired, you had a long day.
No.
Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you, thank you.
Bless you. Uh-oh. Bless you. Uh-oh. Jump up, Mike. Breathe, yeah, breathe. Thank you, Daria. Yeah, he, it, it just went down the wrong side, I think.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's not like when you're laughing too hard and it comes out of your nose. Oh, my dear.
All right.
Okay, so what are you thinking?
Wow. I would be open to appointing both of them. I was very impressed by both of theirs. And I think that, um, both of them, uh, I mean, our last interview, we took away Commissioner Smith's breath away, so.
Was, was that a motion?
I will move to approve Daria Loy and Triest Andrews to the DMMO Board of Directors.
Discussion.
Discussion.
I guess the only thing I would say, oh, so we have, we've already appointed four?
Yes.
Okay, and we are going towards seven possibly, correct?
Possibly, yes.
So my only reservation about appointing the two, um, that we had tonight right off the bat is they're both arts. Um, I, I don't.
Slash retail. Daria owns her own business.
You can slice that up.
I know, but it's arts, but she, she is retail.
My point is this, um, and Triest did speak about the first Arts Commission. That wasn't the first Arts Commission. As we know, um, there was an original Arts Commission that died because of a dilemma that is part of this topic tonight. Uh, and I don't really know how I sit on it. But to refresh memories, um, of a little bit of history, um, the Arts Commission had a retreat to discuss that the Arts Commission was gonna focus only on art and didn't want to get weeded down or, or defocused from art into culture and heritage. The next week, the Arts, um, Subcommittee of the Festival moved its event to the End of the Oregon Trail after the dialogue was to keep Oregon City Arts Commission centered at the Arts Fair at the Carnegie Center, which was the art center. That derailed the original Arts Commission. The only reason I'm saying that is many times in this city, and as an art teacher, people are like, well, jeez, wouldn't you think that art is part of tourism? Absolutely. Don't you think that art is part of, um, don't you think that tourism and art heritage and art culture all intertwine? I do. But sometimes when we create organizations, we have to be careful at the way in which we give each of those, those pieces. Um, and so we went from not having art even listed as part of this to now saying, okay, well, we have two people now that are very much weighted one side or the other. I'd just say be careful with that because we are not creating an Arts Commission. And we're not creating an Arts Commission, we're not creating a Heritage Commission. We're creating a tourism destination organization. So I'm not saying it's wrong or right. I just, that's a balance we have to be careful with because it does, if we weigh that against the other pieces, are we now giving a larger piece to the arts community rather than tourism in general? And, and because of that, I think in terms of the two we interviewed tonight, Daria stands out far, um, different in sense of business asset. She talked about tourism. I don't know how much, um, you know, Triest cares a lot about the arts and has been a crucial member of the Arts Commission and, and various things. Um, I wanna have someone that is, you know, maybe even broader than that. And I'm not saying Triest would not serve well on this committee. But the way Daria approached the questions tonight is far broader. Far more dynamic, far more, um, entrenched in the grand scheme of things and the way that it works. Um, so I, I would just either wait to hear from the third choice that we're gonna interview maybe Thursday. I would probably be supportive, supporting, um, Daria tonight. I would like, I would probably wait on the others. That's just my own personal opinion.
I will withdraw my second in light of your concern. I understand, I understand exactly what you're saying. I, I would agree that, uh, when I read Daria's application, I would have appointed her right then and there based on that because it was, it was strategic, it was broad thinking. Um, she's doing this stuff in her own business. So she brings an art focus, but she also brings a retail focus and she brings a broader scope, which is what this DMO is going to need to do. And what I thought was, um, see what I wrote down here, which was really, um, compelling to me was, you know, how she, uh, when she was ant- let me get to this question that she answered. So, um, you know, why she was interested in serving on the board, but the fact that she talked about, um, under number two, it's, I mean, under number three, it says, what do you think is necessary for a community to have a thriving industry? And she says, she listed five different bullet points that really, to me, nailed it. I mean, it just, again, because of what she's done in her past with, with the, with, uh, you know, um, computing, marketing, her own business, strategically thinking about how you get to something. And then she, I like what she said about the good, better, best. You know, you don't just go off half-cocked and start really broad. You think about, okay, what, what do we, what do we need here? And that was very strategic. I mean, I was, you know, she's the right person. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, that's definitely something that I had thought about when I was going through the applications as well as making sure that it isn't necessarily tilted toward one industry. Exactly. Um, but the mayor touched on this and what made a difference for me in being comfortable with both of them was the retail background. And I also do wanna give credit to Triest for her, uh, work with the Chamber of Commerce as well. Um, but it, it's something I had thought about was, uh, thinking of our other, um, applicants and appointees, like, uh, we appointed Corinne and she also has a background in the performing arts. And so that also falls under the, uh, cultural, arts and culture section as well. And so I think there are things that are just inevitably in someone's background that they, that has been a part of them versus what they've done professionally. Um, and that's why I would be comfortable still appointing Triest. Um, but, uh, for the sake of moving along, uh, I understand the concerns of wanting to wait. So I will rescind my motion and move to appoint Daria Loy to the DMMO Board of Directors.
And a second?
A second.
Is there a second?
Can I?
Well, we need a second before we get into the discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, it's been seconded.
Hold on, I think who seconded it needs to.
Rocky did.
Adam made a motion. I think you seconded it, right? So Adam's rescinding it.
No, no. We rescind, I rescinded my second, he's rescinding his motion. So now we're doing a completely new motion.
Hold on. Adam made a motion, who seconded it?
Yes.
I did, initially. But I withdrew it.
The most recent motion.
He seconded the second motion.
Yes, I withdrew my original motion.
And who, whoever, so you made a motion, you made the first motion, who seconded it?
I did.
She withdrew, withdrew her second before he withdrew his first.
All right, so then you withdrew, you just seconded it. Okay. We're fine now.
So now we're on, yes, so now we're on a new motion which has been moved by Adam and seconded by Rocky. And Mike wants to have some discussion.
I do too.
Um, no doubt, Daria was the better candidate. She was really impressive. I'd put her on any commission. Our options are in that we only have one more candidate to interview. And, well, we have three candidates in three positions. So we either appoint both tonight, which gets us to six, and possibly appoint the person that we're gonna interview Thursday night, which would give us seven. Or we only appoint Daria, which gives us five. And if we appoint the person next week, we would get to six. Like, that was a convoluted way of saying.
We got it.
I got it.
You got it.
It's, we're either gonna have vacancy number seven or we're going to have Triest, or we're going to reopen again, which I don't, which I don't wanna do.
But we still have the right to choose from the people who already applied as well. That's still an option, is the people who had already applied and interviewed.
We do not have to have seven members, we can have six.
I understand, I, I understand. I was just laying out options. Um, I would be in favor of appointing both. I definitely want to appoint Daria. Uh, I'm still in favor of both, but we've got a motion on the floor and we'll see where that goes.
Okay.
Which is kind of weird.
Go ahead.
Never mind, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead. Let's vote, we can vote on.
All right. I, I understand the concerns that have been raised and also for me, looking at just experience outside, I think both are well qualified. I would be fine with appointing both. And, and my concern is, I understand we only have to get five to get up and running, but in the interest of getting this going, I would rather get them towards that finish line in the interest of, let's get this going. I would much rather the DMMO focus their efforts on hiring an executive director than trying to split their time and also get additional members. Uh, and I'm concerned sometimes, I think it's, it's human nature, we get, um, we, we, uh, we let go of the good in search of the best. And so should, could we, you know, appoint one and then say, okay, we wanna keep searching, keep searching? Absolutely, but I feel like we have a great candidate, especially looking, um, back at like the other interviews that we've already done. I think that both of the interviews tonight would be well qualified to serve on the DMMO.
Okay, well, let's vote on, vote on the second motion and then come back with another motion.
Okay.
So, roll call.
Commissioner Adam Marl?
Aye.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so let's have a second.
I will move to appoint Triest Andrews.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, roll call.
Commissioner Adam Marl?
Aye.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Scott Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
No.
Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so we'll have our third interview, hopefully. Um, I was gonna say you could take a break and call her and make sure she's available. I think it's really important that we talk to somebody in, in the ag tourism. Yeah, one of our key, key points. Okay, um, I think we're gonna adjourn the meeting. I don't think we have any other business. And, uh, we will see you all on Thursday. So what time are you meeting with the DMMO people?
Six o'clock on the 10th.
So same time we have budget. Okay, well, check the calendar in the future, don't.
I could skip the budget meeting.
Look, if you get to skip the budget meeting, then we get to skip the budget meeting.
But we did send out a, a poll for everybody.
Yeah, it might, well, I'm pretty sure we have a quorum, so, um, I will leave it up to you. I, I will not, uh, we will not ding you if you go to the DMMO meeting, so. I mean, it's, I think it's important for, for me, it's important for you to be there for the first meeting.
I mean, it is an organizational meeting, it's an organizational, where the attorney's gonna talk about bylaws.
I still think it's important for you to be there so you can hear what's going on and all of that.
Well, yeah, but if it's to hear what's going on, I could watch the meeting later.
I know, but you can also, you can also provide some advice and input.
Yeah, I don't know, well, and that's the question. I, how, how much, how much dialogue and input do I wanna give on the first meeting that they have to discuss what they wanna be?
Well.
Well, you have to understand, the first meeting is on bylaws.
Yeah.
It's on, the first meeting is on bylaws and also a sign, reviewing the MOU and signing it. Um, getting it, it's organizational meeting because we have to get started on this 501(c)(3).
Absolutely.
And, uh, uh, I'm.
Maybe I'll just go to the first part of the budget meeting then.
Sure, that's fine. Okay, thank you. So we adjourned.